All right, we'll get started and we'll reserve the mayor's opportunity for comment. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the November 18th meeting of Narberth Borough Council. We are live on Zoom and streaming on YouTube. And Mr. Metric, could you call the roll, please?
Sure, Mr. McGreevy.
Here.
Ms. Elshacks.
Here.
Ms. Rickards.
Here.
Ms. Pennenopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Weissboard.
Here.
We are awaiting Andrea, who is entering from the waiting room as I speak. Solicitor Wallicks.
Here.
And President Aaron Mudrick.
Here.
All right, is she really in the waiting room? She is?
She's joining in.
Here we are, and Mayor Deutsch is now with us. I'll let her say here. Okay, let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance using our Trustee Forever stamp. Let's see. Eric Johnson, this is a chance for you. Would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I have no comments this evening. Ms. Mayor, do you have any comments?
I do. So, one of the things I want to address tonight is that I think we all know and recognize that COVID is on the rise both nationally and on a local level. In Montgomery County, pretty much everywhere in the US, the numbers are on the rise. And they're rising fairly scarily to a point where Rachel Levine, the Pennsylvania Health Secretary, has expanded the rules with regard to wearing of masks in Pennsylvania. And I just wanted to make everyone aware of this expansion of the mask-wearing rules, and she did this a couple of days ago, in order to prevent the spread and in order to not inundate our hospitals, as we've seen in other parts of the country, where the hospitals are so overrun that they can't handle patients that they have, and it becomes a real crisis. So, she's indicated a little bit of prevention is really necessary to stave off this crisis. In that vein, with regard to wearing of masks indoors, it's now pretty much required everywhere indoors, even in our own houses. And that is said, masks are to be worn whenever someone from outside our households or anywhere indoors is in our presence. So, if you have a workman or a friend or even extended family over, we are still supposed to be wearing those masks. Likewise, outside, masks are pretty much required whenever you leave your house. So, the only exception is if you can totally maintain a six-foot distance away from anybody, which indicates that even if you're running in a downtown or running on a street, if you're going to be within six foot of somebody, you have to be wearing a mask. It's masks all the time, basically. And this will help us prevent the spread of this disease in the way it's been spreading. So, please, everybody, let's do our part and get through this hurdle. It's not forever, but we need to get through this crisis. We also have Thanksgiving coming up. I know people really want to get together with their loved ones during this time. It's really recommended that we keep our groups small and keep it to our immediate nuclear family or the people we live with and limit our exposure to those from other parts of the state or outside our households. In fact, under the new guidelines, if somebody's coming into Pennsylvania, they need a negative COVID test within 72 hours of coming into the state. So, please, let's just be aware and do what we can to limit the spread of this horrible disease. In more interesting, happier notes, I just want to make note that we have an experimental project coming up, starting this Friday night through the next 10 days. It's called Wheels on Windsor. And it's the Narberth Cycling Club, in conjunction with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Authority, has set up a protected biking pilot on Windsor Avenue from Forest Avenue to Grayling Avenue. And it's going to be set up for 10 days to see how we can share the roadways and use the roadways in a multiple-use fashion. So, we're going to try that out. For more information, you can go on the Narberth Cycling Club's webpage and get a little more information about it. But we have something new and exciting coming up for 10 days. And it's a trial balloon and see how it works and see how we can make our roadways friendlier to everybody involved. And that is it.
Mayor Deutsch?
Yes.
Thank you for your strong voice for public safety and thank you for signing the face-covering ordinance. I wondered if you had any update for the community as to when we might expect to see notices posted in the downtown and in the parks?
So, I know that would come from Mr. Metric. I know the signs have been ordered. We are waiting on delivery of that signage. It's all been ordered, and I don't know exactly. I was told it was coming in imminently. I don't know if it's been received or exactly when it's expected. It has been ordered, however.
Mr. Metric?
Thank you.
The signs are in, and we are printing the... We should have them out. Long story, short story, we should have them out by the end of the week. We're getting the notices printed tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you very much, John.
Thank you. So, I'd like to move to 5A, which is discussion about the floodplain. And Mr. Johnson, thank you for joining us this evening. I hear you're an expert in these matters. I think council is just looking to understand the process in general. We know there's a land development project that has gotten our attention at 3 Elmwood Avenue. But just in general, what is the process with this landowner requesting sort of something from FEMA? And where are the opportunities for input? And is this an engineering analysis? Is this a political analysis? Sort of, how does that all work?
Right. Well, thank you and good evening, everyone. So, yeah, I guess maybe I'll start a little bit of background of what your floodplain conservation district is, how it's connected to FEMA, and then how it's potentially changed and how that is undertaken. So, the floodplain conservation district in the borough is directly tied to the FEMA rate, insurance rate maps. And what those maps depict, it's the 100-year floodplain, which, what that is, is a 100-year flood is, in any given year, there's 1% chance that a rainfall intensity will come down large enough to inundate a given area with a flood. And the borough code directly connects your floodplain conservation district to that map. Now, that map is broken up into different zones. And the two zones you'd be familiar with in this area is Zone A and Zone AE. Within the borough, you have Zone A. And what is Zone A is, it's the 100-year floodplain area, in the area that can be inundated by a flood, in which there has not been an elevation to which the water would rise, determined as part of the study. So, and that's as opposed to Zone AE, where additional study has been undertaken by FEMA. And on the map, there is the elevation to which a flood would rise. It's usually a given contour elevation. So, and really, it just comes down to it's the amount of study that would occur. So, you know, within the borough, the floodplain is really focused around Indian Creek. And if you were to go farther down Indian Creek to the south, into Lower Marion, there is Zone AE, where there is a given elevation established. But by the time you go up to the borough, it's Zone A, which means you have to rely on additional means, either interpretation of the map, other information from local or county, or, in the case of a land development, you rely, you can require the applicant to determine what that elevation is. So, you know, as I was saying, in your case, you have the A district, which means the elevation would still have to be determined by an engineering study. So, in the case where somebody, either A, you have to determine what that elevation is, or someone is challenging the boundary of that study and they want to change it, what they have to do is undertake what's called a hydraulic and hydrologic study, which is an engineering study, exactly the same what FEMA would use to do their determinations. They need to prepare the study, and ultimately, they would need to submit it to FEMA to prove to them on an engineering basis that we have run the modeling and this is where the floodplain will go to. And based on that information, on engineering study, you know, it's reviewed on the local level to make sure we're in agreement with it. But then ultimately, it's submitted to FEMA for their review and approval. And the end result is, if they agree, what would happen at the end is there would be a letter of map revision that's issued. And that becomes part of the FEMA flood insurance rate maps as a modification to the map. And that's all based on the engineering study. Now, it is kind of a... That's not to say municipalities are not involved, because in municipality, any changes to the map have to be in agreement with the municipal ordinances. However, it's kind of circular, because the floodplain is developed by an engineering study, which establishes the FEMA map, which defines the boundary of the flood conservation district. So, if the study is updated to reflect FEMA, then that means the flood boundary, the flood conservation district is also modified accordingly. Now, this would be in contrast to somebody who was trying to build inside of the floodplain, in the floodplain conservation district. So, you know where the boundary is, but we want to build in there. Your code has a very specific variance process that would have to be gone through. Similar studies have to be provided, hydraulic studies. But the code does allow variances granted, where the floodplain can be altered, can be affected, based on elevation can be changed by up to a foot. So, there is even a process that could allow things to develop in the floodplain. But that would have to go before the zoning hearing board, you know, as opposed to something that's occurring outside of a floodplain conservation district. So, that was kind of the point, someone to run through if you had any questions or want me to get into anything else.
Council members, I'm sure that some of you have questions. Wow, hearing none. Mona, thank you.
Do we have something that we could show during this meeting? A current map of the floodplain conservation area in relation to south side Narberth?
Let's see. Yes. Let's see. See if I'm...
Mr. Metric?
It's on our website. It's a map that we've, that Matt West created many years ago now that shows our floodplain insurance map as a plain area as a layer in that map. You shouldn't be using that map, though, to make determinations on a property, but at least generally lets you know where it is.
So, it is on there. It is also available. So, FEMA has all of their insurance maps online, and they're called FERMETS. So, if you were to Google FEMA FERMET, it's actually a website. You can type in any zip code, an address, you know, and it will come up with the map, and it shows you where the floodplain is on that map. So, generally, on the south side of the borough, pretty much, if you go to the culvert, it goes under the train tracks, across that 3 Elmwood property, it's essentially flanking either side of the creek as it runs down to, and ultimately, towards Winwood Road, the edge of the borough.
Mr. Metric, if you know where it is on the website and you're the host, is it possible for you to share your screen? And then I think we, Mona, you can probably drill your line of questioning down a little closer to the specific area you have, I'm imagining you have questions about.
Well, I was gonna ask if Eric could put that link in the chat for the FEMA maps? That would be really helpful.
Yes.
We can do that.
So, I'm not sure how specific to go, President Mudrick.
I think you can ask any question. This is an open forum. You have any concern, ask it, and let's get answers.
So, I have, I'm very concerned about the proposed development on Elmwood because of, it's so, it's, you know, whether it's in our current floodplain, how, you know, we already saw this summer, pretty extreme flooding during the storm, and storms are only going to get worse. And our Borough Council Office, our first responders, the fire department, the police are all in that flooding zone. So, I have concerns about stormwater management becoming even a more critical concern if the stormwater runoff becomes worse because of that development, so.
I think, and when you say runoff, Mona, I think what you mean is backup.
Back, yes, backup, because it would be down creek of us, right? So, I'm just wondering, what should a borough be doing in terms of our due diligence to prepare? If this is really, if this is something that could really, you know, create worse flooding in our borough, especially where our first responders in our borough building is?
Right, so, I guess there are two items to consider. One is, so, if any new development that occurs now in the borough is subject to the current stormwater management ordinance, which effectively requires that any stormwater runoff from a particular development cannot be any more than is already leaving that property. So, that property right now, let's say, you know, the particular property you're referring to is a grassed area, some trees. If you put development in there, that stormwater basin now, through their engineering design, has to not allow any more stormwater runoff to leave the property than is now. So, yeah, and then that's very different than development for a very long time, particularly in a inner borough like Narberth, where there was really not stormwater management done for a very long time, up until the last 15 years or so with the new ordinance. As far as the floodplain, so, the FEMA, the floodplain is tied to the 100-year storm, you know, and the hydraulic modeling of what is going to, where the flood is going to go to. You're referencing that storm that happened in the summer. That actually, I don't know the exact numbers, but that was pretty much, that was in excess of the 100-year storm. So, there was actually more, that we showed to have experienced flooding beyond the limits of where that rate map is showing. And with, you know, some changes to the floodplain, the, so far, based on our review of the flood study that they've submitted, it's not that, we're talking a pretty minor change is effectively what it's coming down to. It's a few feet. And it's not, anything that's within that flood area would not be able to be changed. They're proposing to develop outside, you know, of that floodplain. Looking to the future, you know, you're right. So, the, potentially could be right, you know, if we do continue to see an increase in rain intensities, you know, the only way that's going to be reflected in the flood maps is if the federal flood maps were changed, if the rain intensity is associated with that flood, the various floods was changed. So, but generally, the usual practice is to have your floodplain conservation district tied to that FEMA map, since they are, you know, considered the authority on the floodplain.
Is the updating and modification of the FEMA federal floodplain map something that happens on a regular basis, like a scheduled basis, or is it ad hoc?
No, it's generally a scheduled basis. I believe the current map is effective as of 2016. It's generally about a 10-year adjustment to the maps. So, in 2026, it'll probably be the next adjustment.
FEMA would come in and do it on a county-wide basis. So, all municipalities, and Montgomery County redid their maps based upon FEMA's maps in 2016. Chester County then did theirs in 2017. So, as Narberth did theirs, other municipalities were... And it's not optional. What's in order to maintain your flood insurance for your citizens, you have to have these maps as FEMA wants them. So, that's why everyone sort of was spoon-fed from FEMA the maps that needed to be used, which was a revision of the previous maps that FEMA wanted to have be used.
So, maybe just steering the question a little closer to where I think Mona's going, is there a low, if Borough Council wanted to have more regulation of our stormwater, what would be the mechanism for us to do that, given that, you know, the FEMA map sort of exists in their own space? And that might be a question for John or for you.
Well, I, maybe I'll throw it to him in a minute, but I was reading through your code. So, right now, the way your code is written, it says the limits of your flood boundary are tied directly to the FEMA map. So, you know, right now, if someone can come in and say, here's what the map says, then that's where the boundary of your flood conservation district is. You know, so, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, in order to have a broader area, you would have to, it'd be a modification to your zoning code.
When we passed the floodplain maps, yes, it was a zoning ordinance. For some reason, it doesn't seem to be in the zoning code based upon E codes right now, but it was passed as a zoning amendment. I don't know if FEMA would actually have a problem if we wanted to add to it. I think their concern is obviously just not taking something out of the floodplain they feel would be in the floodplain. But in order for us to be able to defend that, we're going to need to have those same tests and modifications that Eric mentioned before in order to support that.
So, in extending it, that would imply, assuming that land is not public land, that those individuals would then sort of suddenly find their properties in the floodplain, which would affect their insurance rates.
Well, it wouldn't be in the FEMA map matter. It wouldn't be in the FEMA floodplain insurance rate.
It wouldn't matter what we do for insurance purposes.
I wouldn't think so.
But you're saying there would need to be some engineering justification, not just sort of taking a marker and...
I'm actually looking in the code, there is something to that effect. You have a change of identification of area, saying the floodplain conservation district may be revised by Borough Council where studies or information provided by a qualified agency or person documents the need. So, there is some technical backing needed.
And then, can you speak to whether the sort of proposed development or changes that you're seeing on that site at 3 Elmwood would potentially cause additional backup of floodwater that would cause flooding sort of on the other side of the train tracks? Is that something that sort of is technically real?
So, what they're... The first, the two parts to what's proposing, the first part is they are essentially doing the engineering study that determines what that base flood elevation is, which is more information than we currently have based on the FEMA map. So, this is that study you need to find the base flood elevation. So, they're then establishing where that is, assuming FEMA agrees, that is the boundary of the floodplain. The development they are proposing at that point is outside of that flood boundary, so therefore falling outside of the floodplain conservation district. So, they're not proposing any modifications to the terrain within the floodplain. So, therefore, not affecting upstream on the floodplain.
So, if I get a little engineering here, they are required to make sure that the stormwater coming off of the property after development is less than the amount coming off now.
It's lesser equal to, right.
Lesser or lesser equal to. And so, you know, if the maximum flow is X, right, then, you know, if they had more stormwater coming off their property, it could potentially cause a backup. But because they will be required to have equal or less, that would not happen.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad I understand that. Mona, anybody else, any other questions?
I just have a question about the zones. You referenced Zone A and Zone B and something else. Is, are Zone A further upstream? And then Zone Bs are generally further downstream? Or is it unrelated to the elevation?
So, it's not necessarily upstream or downstream. In the case of Narberth, it just seems, what it, so, Zone AE is just, is... So, any floodplain has been studied by FEMA. They've come to a conclusion that they, where the floodplain is. The difference is, the Zone AE, there's just been some additional study, where included in the study is an actual elevation data. In the Zone A, it is generally, they say this is where the flood's going to, but they have not established what the exact elevation is. So, it really comes down to, a lot of times, it's actually the level of, you know, there's X amount of funding FEMA has to produce a study, and it takes more time to model an AE than it does an A. You would hope eventually, they would provide more information and that A would become an AE. But it's not necessarily upstream or downstream. It's just where more or less information is available.
My follow-on is, does the label of the type of floodplain that it is, is it a designation of volatility? So that, you know, A is more volatile than the D?
Not necessarily. It's just, really, the difference is, an A requires additional information gathering than the AE would. When you're proposing, when you're trying to really pin down exactly where on a property the flood's going to go to.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, floodplain?
Yeah.
Or Fred, go ahead, Fred.
Sorry, go ahead. All right. So, I think, as I understood it, the reason that they're looking to do this is because they have to maintain a certain distance for the parking, is that right? They're going to put parking a certain distance from the floodplain, and they're trying to get it so that their parking lot can be a little bit, you know, closer to the creek than it currently is, is that the rationale?
Correct, so I believe it's the, I'm just still... The, they're basically, so right now, the location of the FEMA, where the existing FEMA boundary is, would be a little bit in their parking lot. So, they're doing the engineering study to basically adjust where they believe the floodplain actually is. And you're right, so it's the parking lot is where they're coming up close to it. Now, there is a provision in the code that they're looking to be compliant with. There's a requirement that any development has to be a minimum of 50 feet away from the top of bank of a creek. And as currently from the edge, that bank would be considered a wall on either side of that channel. And the development is 50 feet minimum away from the top of bank of the creek. So, that is another section that could apply, but as of right now, that looks compliant. But yes, you're right, they're trying to make sure that they're not losing any, use of any part of the property that they don't have to be based on the boundaries of the study.
And you said that we had a role here, that before it goes to FEMA, we're just going to confirm that we agree with their figures.
So, right, we, right, we, yeah, so they have actually, they had submitted a study. We provided feedback, technical feedback to them. They've revised it. We provide some more technical feedback to them. So, we have reviewed, we have and will continue to review their studies. But even if it gets, if we find it to be satisfactory, it still has to be submitted to and approved by FEMA.
All right, and this is not, this is a matter of your technical opinion, right? This is not really a Borough Council opinion here. This is your expertise in this matter?
Correct, it's being reviewed, so it's an engineering study prepared by a sort of, by, you know, prepared by a sort of, uh, by, you know, a professional engineer being reviewed by a professional engineer um on the merit, on the engineering merits of the study.
Thank you, Mona.
So Eric, are you, you mentioned that they're currently doing a study. That is the type of study which would be submitted to FEMA to change the boundary?
Correct. It's a hydraulic and hydrologic study, uh, which is essentially cross set modeling uh, the floodplain uh for a given drainage area and a given flood uh rainfall intensity.
And is there a process for boroughs to challenge studies like that or we have to do completely our own separate study?
Uh, what Eric just expressed, he reviews it for technical accuracy.
Right.
Um, and I'm also just wondering, it's interesting that that was, that the levels this summer exceeded 100 year storm. Cause I can think of at least three storms where the flooding was that bad in the, in the, you know, 13 years I've lived here, where my daughter, when she was little was like swim, literally trying to swim in Narberth Park. So are there any, are there going to be any forthcoming changes to what 100 year uh storm is now that the storms are changing?
Let me, let me jump in there, Mona. We have made over the years, a number of improvements to the handling of the stormwater through that area so that maybe that same amount of rainfall that eight years ago would have caused so much flooding does not. And so with this storm, we were sort of, I guess, glad we had done those improvements or it would have been far worse. And Mr. Metric, um, I mean, I believe I'm right there, right? The, the broken pipe that we fixed on Havreford. Um, the Shirley Lane uh addition to the, to the, uh, not Shirley Lane. Fox Hall Lane uh addition on North Windwood, et cetera. Okay, we'll just leave it at that. Maybe, you know, I'm not an engineer, Eric.
Yeah, um, right. I mean, it's so, and the consideration to give to a, when we say like a hundred year storm, that, that it, it's all um, statistics. It's there's a, a chance that any, a hundred year storm could happen every year. It is possible. Um, and you know, if rainfall intensities do in fact continue to change and there could potentially be modifications to those standards. Um, but as it is now, the rainfall intensities of a hundred year storm are uh tied to the FEMA standards.
Any other questions?
Sorry, this is.
Go ahead.
Somewhat on topic, somewhat off topic. I, I think that the, um, maybe at a future meeting or, you know, the count, or the council should start discussing um changes to our stormwater ordinance um in terms of exceptions for single family homes, which aren't required to um, I'm not, I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but um, single family homes, new construction maybe don't have the same strict requirements as other types of developments do when our stormwater runoff. So.
Can you speak to that?
Something we should look at in terms of our.
See lots of hands going up.
Am I wrong?
I think Fred might have something to say here.
Yeah, we've, we've been talking about this um in infrastructure. So I think at the workshop meeting, um, we'll discuss, you know, where we were, I mean, we could do it now, but uh I think we were planning to discuss this at the workshop meeting. We have a proposed uh change to code to address um, new, to lower the threshold for new construction to trigger stormwater uh review. So.
There you go.
Yes.
Already in the works. Thank you.
Another thing I would add to that, and just to make sure that we're on the same page, there is the floodplain ordinance. And then there is the stormwater management ordinance. Stormwater management ordinance is more about development and, and the uh, infrastructure that the borough can put in. And certainly we have a lot more flexibility in, in that ordinance than dealing with where the floodplanes are. Uh, and Mona, to answer your question, uh, some people um miss the idea of, there's a difference between land development and someone who's just pulling a permit um for, for example, a single family house. So if there are multiple uh single family houses being developed, then they would have to go through that stormwater management uh system uh and, and review as part of the land development process. The issue that uh Fred and this committee are taking on is when it's just a single family house that maybe is being demolished and rebuilt, that's not a land development. So all you need to do is pull permits for that work. Um, and it's those reviews for just those permits that need a little bit closer look. So I think it's good that the borough is taking a look at that. So that's, that's sort of the hole that, that people sort of uh fall into.
Yeah.
All right. Any other stormwater questions? Eric, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And we'll move to our next item of business, which is the 2021 budget. Um, would FNA or Mr. Metric like to lead off with this conversation?
If you don't mind, if you don't mind, President Mutarik, we have uh the Director of the Narberth Community Library, Brad, and um Chairperson of the Board, Linda Waddell, this evening.
Great.
Are here to talk about, uh, in response to some questions Council had at its last meeting regarding the Narberth Community Library's budget request. Um, and you all had some questions about um staffing that I was not prepared to answer. And I thought you'd be better off if you got those answers uh from Brad and Linda.
Great. Thank you guys for coming. The floor is yours.
Okay, so.
We have to be unmuted. Oh, thank you.
You're there. We hear you, Linda.
I got you. I see it. Um, all right. Well, I think Sean said the questions that you had were the, you looked at the budget request and you asked how many staff we have. We have one full time, which is Brad, who's on the call, and we have seven part time. And you, I think, also asked about the average salary uh for our part time people and that's, it averages $17 an hour.
Okay, thank you. Are there, uh, other specific questions for the library? Well, hearing none. Uh, Linda, maybe I give you an opportunity. Could you tell us a little bit about uh the library's utilization during these past couple of months? Uh, I know, you know, we've always tracked sort of utilization and check-ins and checkouts um and activities over the years. Curious how the COVID is affecting us.
Well, of course we were closed, as you know, uh, for a couple of months, right at the very beginning of the year, in March, about March 13th, to be specific. And, and then we started opening up for um contactless curbside delivery. Uh, and then we opened up for appointments for browsing and appointments for using the computer. We're going to have to stop the browsing and the computer use and anything inside the library effective 20th because of the governor's closing of museums and so forth and so on. Uh, but our circulation has been great. Uh, we have, we're very happy about that. The people have been so happy that they've been able to get their books, they, and their DVDs and so forth. They call in, as you may know, they call in, they, or they go online and they order whatever it is they want. And we can then let them know by computer or phone for those who aren't technically proficient. We let them know that their materials are there and they call and schedule an appointment to come and pick it up. We put it in a brown bag and uh leave it for them. Or they call then we walk it to the door and just hand them the brown bag and that's it. And if they don't want to come to the door, we'll run it out to the car. And the circulation has gone up. Uh, it's been, it's been really, really good. Um, a lot of people even from Lower Marion are coming here because it's convenient and it works well.
That's great. That's wonderful to hear. Thank you. Any other questions for the library? All right. Thank you guys for your time. We'll get you in, get you out.
Okay. Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too. Thanks. Um, are there any other 2021 budget items to be part of the discussion, Mr. Metric?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was holding up two fingers because I have two line item adjustments for Council to consider as a faction. And later in the meeting, and they're both good news. Um, we uh received our updated estimated overall assessed value for the borough, borough's property, and that went up slightly. Whereas if you recall from the last version of the budget, the assessed value for all of Narberth was, was down ever so slightly. Uh, so what that translates into without changing the tax rate, uh, the millage rate, uh, the line item for real estate tax revenue, 130010 is going to go up to 3 million 70,000 936, which is a plus of about $7,880. Uh, so um, we don't expect the assessment, we won't get the final assessment information until after Council has adopted the budget. So this is pretty much our budget uh baseline assessment number that we're going to be using in our budget. Um, typically when we do get the final report, which will come in about six weeks, sometimes it's a little bit higher even. Um, it just depends. The overall trend is, is slow and steady increase in the overall um assessed value of the borough. The second item I want to bring everyone's attention to uh is, as a change item is uh in the police service fees to Lower Marion Township. Uh, that's line item 410 453 in the general fund. We received notice from the township, which is required as part of our agreement that the fee will be 106,749. I had calculated that fee as a slightly higher number because I was just making a CPI Consumer Price Index assumption, and actually CPI is a lot lower than I assumed it was this year. So uh, the number is down about $1,989. So if you're doing your math, we're about net uh, $10,000 on the good side of budget news with those two changes.
Um, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some questions from Council members? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion of the police pension, 5C. Um, Mr. Bush or Mr. Metric, who would like to lead this one off? Go ahead, Fred.
All right. Well, we've been discussing this uh a lot in FNA and I know we've had some spillover into full council meetings. Um, hopefully people have had a chance to review some of the um emails that Sean uh and I sent out earlier or some of the discussion uh last month uh in FNA, which I think we tried to summarize, but um it's a lot going on. So the issue that I see is that based on um analysis of various police uh spending for municipalities uh like us throughout Pennsylvania, we are spending a huge amount in our police pension fund, um, a lot more than other municipalities are. And that has a lot of causes, um, but one of the causes is our assumptions for the um rate of return that we'll get for our investments. Um, so right now, um, our assumption is that we will get a rate of return of 5% on our investments. Um, this was changed originally, or I don't know about, I forget the exact date, y'all were here, but it was changed a few years ago from 7% uh down to 5%. Um, and the result of that change is that due to a lot of um actuarial assumptions and due to a change in the um uh, the underlying asset allocation in our pension fund, um, that has given us an extra about $1.2 million in pension liabilities. Basically that's money that we will not receive from our investments. So we have to put it into the fund ourselves to make sure that our pension beneficiaries um receive their benefits. Um, so, you know, we've had the pension fund trustees come in and talk to us about the situation. I think, uh, you know, last week, you know, we discussed this with them. I think their their concern was that 7% might have been a um, a bit aggressive. Um, I think they're very bearish on the market. They don't think the market is going to do well in the next, uh, in the medium term. Um, so, you know, as a result, when the pension fund shift happened, they moved uh into a lot more conservative investments and they felt that that is a, you know, that was a, you know, a very reasonable uh move by the borough. Um, I've been looking around and uh, I mean, I showed some figures, some comparative figures. I found some information from 2013 on, for the whole state of Pennsylvania. And uh, the average um sort of investment assumptions were 7%. That's where we were before. That was the median figure. There were only about 5% of municipalities in the entire state that were at the 5% level or below. Um, there is a state regulation that says where your range should be. They say you should be in a range of 5 to 9%. So we are at the very bottom of the range that the state uh considers appropriate for pension investments. They don't want pensions to be, you know, sitting under your mattress. They want them to be actively invested. So if we wanted to go any lower, we would have had to justify it to the state. I looked at where we stand sort of compared to state pension funds. So I was able to find information for where state pension funds are. And uh, the, the average for state pension funds was also, uh, I want to say that was right around 7% as well. Um, there was only one state that had a, had assumptions below 6.5%. And that was Kentucky. And uh, we are even more conservative than Kentucky uh in this regard. Um, so I think that um, you know, our, I mean, my interpretation is that we are leaving potential investment returns on the table here. We are well below um what is, what seems to be standard. And I think that uh there is room to adjust our expectations and hopefully do better for the borough, do better for our, our pension uh recipients.
Questions for Fred? Or general discussion? Go ahead, Mona.
So I, I'm still coming back to the email that we got from Sean earlier today, which had some recent um suggestions from Chris. Uh, our, one of our police pension trustees. And I'm wondering whereas, you know, the idea of moving to slightly less conservative, maybe 6% is a very appealing idea. When I'm looking at how he talked about projections for a 60 40 mix, maybe even having um, negative returns or from one source or less than 4% returns from another source or um, maybe around 6% from another source. I'm wondering if we, at this point in time, with the way he was looking at some of the market projections, at this point in time, if we said, let's move to say 6% returns, does that mean we'd have to have a much more aggressive mix than 60 40? And that makes me nervous. Does that, so that's, that's what I'm, you know, if this were not strange times, you would, you, you know, 60 40 could get you pretty good returns, right? But it is strange times. So if we said to the pension, police pension trustees, we want to go for around 6% returns, are they going to have to? Does that make sense? I mean, I'm, I'm new to this.
It, it does. I, I guess it'd be, uh, the question, how deeply into sort of into this should we look? Should we just, you know, I'm looking for your advice, Fred. Should we focus on just a target percentage that meets our risk profile or should we, you know, open it all the way up and look at everything that they're doing and, and, and sort of vet that out? What, what do you think? I, I think that's sort of what, some of what Mona's asking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, um, well, to answer Mona's specific question, I think that, um, in the past, when we were at 7%, right? That was four years ago, I think. We were at 60% stocks, 30% bonds, 10% cash. So that was, that was considered appropriate for a 7% return a few years ago. Presumably something like that would still be considered appropriate for a, you know, a 6% return or wherever we decide to land. I mean, I I don't think it's going to be too far out of whack from that. Um, I mean, we can, we can, we can say, I mean, I think it would be appropriate to say we'd like to be more aggressive. We'd like to see a return of. So right now I think that the industry average is around seven. You know, we, the advice from our pension fund trustees is to be more conservative. So we could come in at like six and a quarter or six or something and say, here's where we'd like to be. And then have them come up with a, you know, an appropriate asset allocation and see what that would look like. And if it looks super aggressive, then we can, you know, uh, you know, we can take a step back, but I suspect it'll look more like 60%, 40%, because that seems to be the industry standard.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess that does answer my question because I'd like to hear from them if we decided to do that. What, yeah, what would that allocation look like? That would make me more comfortable making a decision.
So the, the timing on this is that at the December 31st, our auditor is going to take a look at our um, portfolio and our, you know, our, our choices and make, to say, you know, and, and perform some calculations and determine um, our obligations uh for 2022, I think in 2023. So it would be, you know, we, if we make our decisions before that December 31st um deadline, you know, they'll be able to. And I think that's, that's our deadline basically by end of December. Uh, if we make a change, then it'll be reflected. If we make a change, then it'll be reflected in our next calculations, the next set of calculations.
So what's the mechanism for us to sort of set a target number? Is that a, is that a resolution or a motion later?
I believe it's a, it's a request to the, to the trustees, but Sean, if you know differently, let me know.
That's a John Walker question. I do think it would have to be an action of council, since they're the ones that set, council is the one that sets that directive.
You probably would want to make a motion, and if we needed to fill that in with a resolution for paperwork later, if someone needed it, we could do it, but.
Okay, so. So I'll take a motion to amend the agenda to add seven J, which is a motion to request a change in the investment return rate for the police pension. Someone want to make that motion? Fred's made it. Seconded by Michelle. All in favor? I, okay, the agenda is amended. We will discuss it later in the meeting. Thank you. Any, anything else on the pension? Hearing none. We'll go to public comment. We have some people here tonight. Let's see, I guess I will try to call on you. I'm assuming Fred is not Fred Bush. So if your Zoom name is Fred, if you would like to make a public comment, just state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. Oh, it's Fred Fromholz.
I'm sorry, I never updated and put my last one to Zoom. The Montgomery Avenue Land Development.
Okay, sure. No problem. Let's see. Adam, I'm assuming you're here for that as well. How about Mark?
Is that me?
Yes, that's you.
I got the wrong name, wrong name on there. Hello, everybody. So I have several questions for you. In regards to two oh one Sabine, when is the boroughwide survey going to be circulated? With the infrastructure meeting, Fred said that there was no real plan to have anything done. The bike lane is having a survey done. I think the, having the second largest land, open land in.
Well, I can tell you there, there is a survey, because I, I saw it. Mr. Metric, do you have the quick answer?
I don't know the release date of that yet, but yeah.
It's, it's fairly, it's fairly imminent. Go ahead. You had a couple other questions?
Well, that was one. So there is a survey. That is very good news. The, the second is, what's the plan for more public comment and more public community meetings about the park? I remember several years ago, we went to the, to the Girl Scout Room, and we looked at plans and, and months and months of meetings. What are we doing as far as meetings for the community on two oh one Sabine?
I think once we have the survey results and we get to the point where we actually have a draft, RFP, we'll have the next kind of set of information to figure out what that next step is. But until we move to that next checkpoint, I don't think I have an answer.
All right. And I would also just like to take this moment to thank Sean for all his work for the borough. And it's been a Herculean effort getting, working with the borough and, and getting things unmasked and, and very well organized. So I would like to, as a citizen, thank you for your, for your service, and thank you for all the effort that you have done. And I also am curious about what's the process for hiring a new borough manager?
Well, we, we will be meeting an executive session to discuss that, and then as soon as we have something to share with the public, a plan, we will share it probably at the next meeting.
And then are the, what portions of the exit interviews are released for, for the public?
I, I don't think any would be. If, if there was an exit interview performed, I don't think that, I don't think it would be public. It would be personnel matter.
So that's not through a right to know?
No.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Oh, one, one real quick thing. On our street, on Sabine Avenue, we are having an exponential increase of people going the wrong way on our street. And as I've mentioned over several years, we're missing one-way signs. There's one-way signs at the very, at the Essex Avenue side, and there are one-way signs at the Montgomery Avenue traffic light. But there's nothing in between signs, and anytime we, you know, frantically flag anybody down as they're roaring past the park, they're saying, but there's no signs, and that is very true. I've spoken multiple times to council, and I've talked to Chief Gallagher about it. And I'd like to know, what are we doing to get us some safety, some one-way signs on our street? We had five today between three o'clock and six o'clock.
I, I'm going, I'm going to get back to you personally on that.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Brower? Anything to say? No? Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Maybe?
No, thank you, Aaron. No, nothing to say.
Okay, Mr. Winston, maybe?
Nope.
Okay, and Mr. Tweedy?
No, I'm here for six fifty.
Great. All right. Well, we'll close public comment and move on to action items, seven A. And that means, so scroll here. Counselor Rick.
I got it.
Go for some motions. Great.
Yep, I'm, I move the Borough Council approve the minutes of the October and twenty first meetings of Borough Council.
Is there? Thank you. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Yes, Mr. Metric, you have something to say?
Could someone kindly amend the motion? I apologize to not include the October twenty first, because those have not been completed yet. So we are just approving the October seventh. Thank you.
So could someone just raise their hand? They move to amend? And a second? All in favor of accepting the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye. All right. Thank you. Okay, that's A. How about B?
I move the Borough Council approve the schedule of bills for the general highway aid sewer and solid waste funds, and authorize the borough manager to pay all bills.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes. D?
C, I move the Borough Council.
Oh, sorry, C.
God, no worries. I move that Borough Council approve the extension of land development and subdivision plan review for two thirty Havreford Avenue per the attachment.
Is there a second? Seconded. Any discussion? Anything to add, Mr. Metric? All in favor? Aye. The extension is approved. I don't see any nays. All right, now we can do D.
D, I move the Borough Council approve Resolution twenty twenty dash oh thirteen Final Land Development Plans for six fifty Montgomery Avenue per the attachment.
Is there a second? Seconded. Discussion. Mr. Metric, is there, or Mr. Walker, are there any remaining issues or things that council needs to be aware of here?
No, no issues apart from any other final land development plan, just minor matters that will be cleaned up prior to the recording of a plan if approved by today. It was reviewed by the Fire Marshal per the recommendation of Narberth Planning Commission. There was a condition put on as a result of that regarding the ensuring that the fire department connection is shown on the final plan. It's approved by the Fire Chief. Any other coordination with Lower Marion Township regarding any improvements in the right-of-way has been added on as well. Other than that, there are no new waivers. Council saw this plan during the preliminary plan, with the conditions that were on the preliminary plan are also on the final plan. And they continue to, the, the borough review and zoning officer review letters are clean. Again, there's just some things to clean up, but, but nothing outside of the ordinary on it. And again, the applicant is here, his attorney and engineer is here if there are any questions.
So, council, any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the plans for six fifty Montgomery Avenue? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. It is unanimous. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody in council and the Planning Commission and J Tree for all of their feedback and working cooperatively and proactively with us through this program and process. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, back to you, Cindy. E.
Okay, I move the Borough Council amend the twenty twenty one operating budget.
Second? No one wants to approve the budget. Bob will do it. All right, any discussion? Yes, Mona?
So, you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm the risk averse nervous Nellie. I have, at the same time, I have so much appreciation for Sean Metric and everything he's been able to do with our budget over the years. But I feel like this is a year in which, next year, I don't, you know, we're, we've been working to try and build some reserves. It's a good thing that we did that this year, because some of our reserves were exhausted, and we're still coming up slightly above with about five thousand maybe projected at this point. But some of our reserves that we, that we built in last year were exhausted. And I think it's really important to try and build in some reserves, whatever we can, even though it's going to be a smaller amount this year. I'm not interested in raising taxes at a time like this. I'm not interested in cutting most spending at a time like this, but I also don't want to end up in a position next year where we end up with some emergencies, some, you know, road or sewer or whatever emergencies, and it puts us into a shortfall because of just the precarious situation our economy is in right now. So I have, I just wanted to chime in about possible increases in spending that maybe I want to, I'm wondering if we can take another look at. So for the, you know, for looking at our budget, projected budget for next year, we're actually reducing expenses overall, and we're projected to reduce our expenses in administration, in the fire company, and in our police budgets. And so I'm wondering, at a time like this, I'm not certain that we should be putting in a, what is it, an almost eight thousand dollar increase in the library budget. I'm a teacher. I care deeply about libraries on a personal level. I think libraries are essential, but I, you know, when we're working so hard to reduce our budget in other areas, I don't, I don't think that we should be increasing the library budget by almost eight thousand dollars in a year like this. I'm also wondering about the ambulance budget. I think, I think we should put it back to maybe the four thousand that we were in before, the last time we were giving money to them. And then, because there will be future increases in the next couple of years, it might be rocky if we don't have, you know, given how long it might take to distribute effectively a vaccine. And I also wanted to revisit the planning fees. I know I asked, in F and A, I asked Sean, and I had sent Sean questions earlier about it. I'm wondering about, you know, we have a lot more planning fees next year that are going up by about seven thousand dollars, and I'm just wondering if there's wiggle room to maybe think about those planning fees. So I had asked about the planning, the Montgomery County Planning Commission fees. I think, Sean, you said that's about an eleven thousand dollar a year contract. Am I correct? And I'm wondering, I have another question about that. Is that, and, and you had mentioned, you think that's, I said, well, do we need that many services from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, since we're no longer creating a new form-based zoning code? And Sean had mentioned that that is probably the, he believes that's the smallest, the lowest level contract that they, that they do, and I'm just wondering how that's comparable. Well, two questions. I'm wondering, do we, in many years, exceed that amount? Are there other, other fees added on to the contract? And also, how is that, is that comparable to other planning companies? I don't know the answer, so I'm just wondering about that.
Okay. Mr. Metric, you had also raised your hand. You had things to say, and maybe also can interweave some answers to Mona's, some of Mona's questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the, the two things that were part of the motion on council's table included the, what I mentioned earlier, which is the increase in the tax revenue item to a number of three million seventy thousand nine hundred thirty six, and a decrease in police service fees to Lower Marion Township to one oh six, seven four nine. With regards to the question about planning services, I think you can tackle that one, because I remember, you know, I remember that well, having been the planner from Montgomery County. And it is a baseline service that you get charged a flat rate based upon planner hours that they assume is going to, is going to, your, your needs are going to be, with whatever your needs are. Honestly, the, the three years that I worked that contract, Narberth got a really good deal. It was paying nine, ten thousand dollars a year, and I was putting in, I was putting in time sheets of eight hundred to nine hundred dollars, eight hundred to nine hundred hours a year. The amount of hours we're putting in now is not at that level, because you're right, we're not writing a zoning code with their help, but we still are putting in hours. And the way they price their deals is that they, they actually price it at twice the rate, and then they, and then they discount. It's like, it's like your Comcast bill. They discount it fifty percent to say, hey, the, the county's going to have your back here, and, and this is what it really costs us to send you a planner, three planner days a month, and we're going to absorb half of that cost, client, client in our birth. And so we really would be charging you twenty thousand, but we're going to charge you ten or eleven, whatever the number is. That's their basic business model, and they kind of have. It's very standardized. They have about four or five different size contracts, and the size contract Narberth has is the smallest they offer. It's the economy-sized contract. I think Lower Marion Township might be in the, the premium or luxury category. They, they have maybe four or five times the amount of planner hours in their contract. Right, so fees, fee is a lot higher. I don't, that was one of your questions.
Also, Mona, to sort of, you know, talk process. So we're, we're voting to make this amendment, but the budget remains open. Sean, what's the timeline for us to have a final vote on the budget? That is the last opportunity we might have to make any changes which were brought up, which may be better handled sort of offline or in committee or, or, you know, to actually effectuate them.
Thank you. The, the last currently scheduled council meeting in the calendar year is December sixteen. Council could advertise for another meeting if it wanted to do something later in the year, and had done that, had done that in the past. But I intend to deliver, Matt and I are going to work hard on the final polish in the next couple of weeks, and we, we're going to deliver a budget on the second of December to you that we think accurately indicates all expected expenditures. Matt and I have to talk a little bit about Public Works Maintenance and Equipment, where we're, we're running a little over this year. And we took a deeper look at some of the equipment, and it's giving us a little, getting a little nervous about the, the vehicles and what maintenance are things that are going to be, need to be done next year. So we might be coming back and increasing those numbers a little bit in our rec, final recommendation, but we'll have a budget that we are, we think is completely accurate, to the best of our knowledge, as of December two, to you.
Okay. All right. So then, that sort of gives us all a timeline as we find things in the, in the line items and questions that we have to work with F and A as a committee, even if it's outside of sort of the, the official meeting process, to call and make questions, and then also to work with the staff to get answers. Bob?
I just have a short comment about the budget. The Social Security Administration's COLA for twenty twenty is one point six percent. And I just think it's important for us to keep that in our minds, that, you know, all, all costs go up, including the, and we're fortunate that we have a, a tax base that's also going up, and that we were lucky that our police services to Lower Marion were reduced somewhat than we anticipated. I'm very much in line with Mona in the sense that I'd like to see us continue to build our cash reserves and prepare for future, you know, future pandemics if we're, you know, which, which eventually will come. There will be, we will other, we will have other downturns, and we should prepare to have the cash reserves on hand for those, for hard times. This has been a particularly good year for many people in this region who had investments. This has been an incredibly good year for people's property values. I understand that a tax increase is not something that's, you know, that's, you know, appetizing to most people, but a cost of living increase of 1.6% if we were to increase taxes by that much is, is somewhat, you know, it's nominal and I think responsible to do, to make a, a small and modest increase year over year so that we don't end up with, you know, a 9% increase landing in the laps of some future council, which, you know. So I just, I just wanted to hear other people's thoughts on that idea of a, of a nominal increase like a COLA.
Any other council members thoughts? Nothing right now. Oh, Rob, go ahead.
Just ask Sean, what, what was our reserve ballpark? Was it 40,000 cash reserve that we had going into the pandemic? Or, I mean, we used quite a bit.
I think our projected, you could call it a net revenue in a sense, was about 38,700.
So yeah, I mean, it's just something, that's really come in handy this year. We can see that. So I would love to be able to match that in some way or, or try to get closer to that. And it sounds like Sean and Matt just found us 10,000 that we could possibly put in reserve. You know, and yeah, and then Mona mentioned a couple of other areas where we might trim. And then maybe, maybe a modest tax increase. I, I, that's something I would like to explore.
Okay. Okay. I think it's, it's been my experience that as we approach this deadline, sort of more frequent calls directly to the Borough Manager emails, you know, sort of facilitate moving it along because the, the results will, are all public. And it's a transparent process, but you know, the clock ticks. So everybody get their input in and we'll kind of, we'll move it along. Any other discussion budgetarily, since we have sort of a budget item open here? Oh, yes Fred?
Well, I just want to say, in regards to the library budget, the, the reason we're being asked for an increase is because there's a, there's sort of a one-time costed salary adjustment for the library director. We have a document that was sent to us showing us comparative library director salaries. So Mona, you know, maybe you want to take a look at that and see whether, you know, that makes sense to you. But I think that's the primary reason that we have a, an increase in the library. Request.
I, I did look at that, but you know, a one-time increase, but then that increase stays right year after year. And I'm wondering, then we're tied into that amount for next year regardless of what our, I mean, I guess not, you know, we're kind of committing ourselves to that regardless of what our revenue looks like next year.
I don't know that we're committing ourselves. They may be committing themselves as long as they have that library director.
I guess I would support a more modest increase, not that much.
Sure. Or that it's not passed to us 100%.
Right.
Sure. Okay. All right. All in favor of the two amendments that Mr. Metrick discussed? Say aye. All right. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. We'll move on to F.
I move that Borough Council approve advertisement of ordinance 1028 per the attachment.
Is there a second? Bob? Discussion. Let's just start off with Mr. Walco.
Yes. So this is the comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment that has been before council for discussions and has been seeing its way through the Narberth Planning Commission. I do see Mr. Bressi here, Mr. Brower. Certainly Mr. Bressi and the Planning Commission, Maggie Dobbs. Really, the, this is a brainchild of them. So I want to make sure they get the proper credit for, for putting this together from a planning point of view. It has been going on for a while and we have had discussions on this in the past. Since that time, there have been additional clarifications that have been added to it towards the end. But so the time to have this, to have this passed has actually worked in our favor in regards to trying to find other things to add and give it the proper reviews that are needed. But at this point, through the planning commissions and the planning process, it's, it's gotten to where it needs to go. So if this is something that council wants to move forward to with these, these array of changes of the code, we would approve for advertisement and it would be a January hearing if approved.
Okay. And Mr. Bressi?
Good evening.
Good evening. Maybe you could, just for the benefit of the public who might be watching as well as council members, just take us through the high notes.
Okay. Well, first of all, it's a pleasure to, to join you all. Now that we're doing this by Zoom, it's actually easier. So I'm, I'm actually in North Carolina today, but I'm able to join you. This code, these, these code revisions cover a wide array of topics that have arisen over the, the past year or so. In, in general, the topics they consider are sections A, B, and C deal with the size of the facades of new houses in the residential districts, 3A, 3B, 3C. The, the actual size of the facade is one of the main ways we regulate the scale of buildings. And this, these changes would tighten those dimensions a little bit. We had an extensive conversation with council about this several, several months ago. Section D is about strengthening the, 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 the part of the code that deals with fences. Currently, anyone who would like an exception from our fence ordinance can seek a special exception and the language is so loose that they can get one for almost any reason. We're proposing.
Yep.
Is that a question or?
No, go ahead.
We're proposing that people who would request relief from the, the fence ordinance would have to get a variance, which is a stronger burden of proof of hardship to have an exception to the fence code. There are a couple of sections that are mostly housekeeping about clarifying the process of advertising zoning hearing board meetings. There are a lot of, we spent a lot of time actually cleaning up little inconsistencies in definitions and terminology and making sure cross referencing was correct. As we've used the code, we've realized there's a, a number of ambiguities. And so sections G, section G is really just a clarification of, and tightening up of definitions. So things are more consistent in the code. There are a number of changes regarding parking and many of these came about after we heard the public comments about 114 Forest. So these are parking quantity requirements primarily in the 5A zone. And the main changes are in the 5A zone currently, an applicant can get credit towards their parking requirement for the parking that's on the street next to their building, according to certain rules. And we felt upon reflection that wasn't really appropriate in the 5A district. The, the spaces on the street should be for people who are coming to shop or visit or do business and not for, not counted to meet a development's requirement. And so we removed that provision. We also, we also are recommending a provision for visitor parking for large residential developments, for residential developments of over 10 units. We're recommending that the applicant provide one spot for every 10 units of visitor parking. We did an extensive analysis, a national analysis really of what parking codes said for areas like Narberth. And we found that our code was in the range of codes that we found for similar situations, but on the range that was, that had the lowest number of parking requirements. So we didn't, we didn't feel that slightly tightening up the requirements would put us out of the range of what municipalities in our situation normally do. So slight tweaks to the, the parking requirements in the 5A district that would result, maybe if 114 Forest went through again, they might have to provide three or four, five more parking spots for that development. That's sort of the impact of that. And again, I'd like to say we took that up after we heard the public's comments on this issue. There is in section, the quantitative requirements for, for the 5A district are also, we're proposing that they be amended also to allow an exemption of 2,500 square feet of retail space and an additional exemption of 2,500 square feet of professional or office space. An exemption from the parking standards. Currently, any non-residential use is, there's a 2,500 square foot exemption for any non-residential use. We wanted to expand that a little bit because we've heard concerns that office uses, small businesses in Narberth might be disadvantaged by, by the parking requirements. And so we felt that we would like to encourage small, non-retail businesses as much as we like to encourage small retail businesses. So it made sense to exempt the first 2,500 square feet of non-retail businesses from the parking requirement as well. Now, that doesn't change the rules about where these things can go. We would not, we're not changing the rules to allow offices or professional spaces on the ground floor. Because we do want those to be retail, we're thinking of the upper stories. It also, it also makes it slightly more desirable to use the upper stories for office or professional space than for housing than now. So we're just trying to tip the scales a little bit, making more parking requirements for housing, less parking requirements for office and professional uses as a slight way of, of maybe creating a, a greater incentive for that. So that is, that's an important recommendation. There are some recommendations in section I about the design of parking. Some of these are with an eye towards what might happen in the area where the Borough owns a parking lot now, which might be redeveloped. Now, none of these changes would apply to that project because that project is already, an application's already been submitted. But nevertheless, we felt it would be important to put in place zoning revisions that did express what our vision and goals for that area was in case that application fell through and we got to consider another one. Or as a signal to the applicant of what we would like to see, even though they wouldn't be required to follow these changes, these would at least express what we would like to see. So one of the changes in section I prevents parking from being accessed from Haverford Avenue unless it is a private, unless it is a public parking lot. So we would not allow any access to a lot or a garage from Haverford Avenue for parking. There are also tightening of rules for parking that is on the ground, but under a building like was recently approved at 100 Conway. And to, to, of three, S, Haverford, to require those underground, that, that, that surface level parking under a building to be screened from the street. Technically, that doesn't have to be done now. But we felt that was, that was a design that would be important. Moving on, we realized that while the zoning code allows for structured parking, a parking deck in, in some districts like 5A and 5B, there weren't very many rules about how to design it. And so in this section I, number seven, there are a range of design requirements for structured parking. One of the most important ones is that structured parking cannot go up against a street. It has to be set back from the street and between the parking and the street, there has to be occupiable space. Retail use on the ground floor, offices or residential on the upper levels, so that on the front of a building, we're not, we're not looking at a parking garage. We're looking at a real building, the parking is behind. Those requirements are also extended to the 5B district, which is Montgomery Avenue. Section J deals with building heights. What we are proposing are a few things here. One is that in the 5A and 5B districts, so we began this process after we learned that there were conflicts in the zoning code about how building height could be measured. Applicants often pointed out to us there were two ways building heights could be measured. So that didn't really help us well when we were reviewing applications. So we decided there should be one standard. In addition, when we looked at the 5A district, we realized that particularly in the areas around South Narberth Avenue and Haverford Avenue, because of the steep slope there, that we wanted to tie the height of the building to the, of a new building to the location of the building as opposed to the perimeter of the lot. In most zoning districts in Narberth, the way you measure the height of the building is to take the height of the edge of the lot and use that as kind of a baseline for the height of the building. But we realized in, in some lots where there's a big slope and a big grade change, doing that might result in buildings in some areas that are much higher than we anticipated. And so we're proposing that the building height should be measured from the actual site where the building is, which means if we're asking for a 25-foot building, it's going to be 25 feet higher than that actual location, not the edge of the lot. I think when we see 230 Haverford, you'll see that that application, you'll see that, so the early, some of the early proposals for that have a, have a building whose height is measured from the highest point on the site, essentially, and, and it becomes a very high building. So we, we also have introduced the notion of an average building height for the 5A district. And what that says is that even though the highest point, the maximum height of your building might be 32 feet, the average height of the building, that is the height measured along the whole edge of the building has to be, can't be higher than 26 feet. So again, that, basically what these two rules do is they result in buildings that lay closer to the topography of the land. And they don't, they don't sort of pick one high point in the land and use that as the, the basis of, of what their height should be. The section L is largely a housekeeping section. Section N and section O deal with the commercial and mixed-use building types, which are the common building types in the 5A district. And what they do is they provide a lot more detail about how those facades should be composed. Most of those, most of the rules we have right now just deal with the ground level. And we've introduced more rules that deal with the middle of the building, the upper part of the building and the roof line, so that we have a lot more detail about what we expect in terms of how the buildings will be designed. There's also a point that was discussed at length in council was the maximum width of a shop front on a commercial building, which we are still proposing to be limited to 40 feet. On the other hand, for a mixed-use building, the maximum width of the building can be 65 feet. And that, that's sort of a result of a, the lot patterns in downtown where, where 65 feet is sort of at the, the higher end of the range of lot widths. And because a mixed-use building kind of needs to have a larger floor plate to operate than a, than a commercial building. And so that creates a kind of mix of, of, of building widths. The, let's see. Down section P, which deals with frontages, also has more detailed rules about the width and, and design of shop fronts. Again, to kind of manage the scaling of them and how they are demarcated from additional adjacent shop fronts. Section Q is an area of the zoning code that was missing when we first wrote it, which was how do we, the zoning code allows for multiple buildings on a lot, multiple, multiple primary buildings. But there were, there was never any process that explained how we would review or approve them. So for the first time, we will have in the code, a process and standards about how to review a site that has multiple primary buildings. This could potentially come up at 230 Haverford, a large site, if in the end they decide not to have one building, but multiple buildings there. It would have come into play when, years ago, when multiple buildings there. It would have come into play when, years ago, when the Borough approved Price Crossing. Although this, this requirement would only apply in the 5A and 5B districts. So maybe I shouldn't use that as an analogy. It would have applied at 650 Montgomery, where there are two buildings on one lot. And so it gives us more tools to work with applicants and with the hope that we can enter into conversations about having more buildings, but smaller buildings on these larger, these larger lots. Then finally, let's see, a few more housekeeping amendments and then a very small amendment for signage. It came to our attention from the Borough zoning officer that there were applicants, this is, let's see, I'm trying to find the right section here, section DD. Some applicants wanted to put up awnings with signs on the kind of angled part of the awning, but it was not clear from the zoning code that they were allowed to do that. And so at the request of the zoning officer, we considered that topic and felt that it was appropriate for signs to go on the angled part of an awning, since we have so many that are like that now already. And so that would be included in the code so that shop owners could put signage on their, on their awnings, on the sloped part of their awnings. That's about as quick a summary as I can give, Aaron. Mr. President, I'm sorry it took so long, but that, that's what this covers.
No, I appreciate it. It also covers a tremendous amount of work by a fantastically talented group of volunteers. And before we even begin discussion, I just want to thank you for the excruciatingly, excruciatingly detail-oriented work that went into preparing this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, comments and questions for Mr. Bressi, if any? Hearing none. I will say all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. This will go to advertisement. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
All right, and moving back to our agenda. Screen moved here. Let's go to G, I believe, Public Health and Safety. Yes, Mr. Metric, go ahead.
Just a housekeeping thing. I apologize, my, my Borough laptop crashed. Whomever is the host now, could you please report?
I'm sorry, Sean, am I still the host because you made me host an FNA?
Yeah.
I saw an admit, I admitted Susie Metric, is that me?
If you, if you have, yes, so you're the host. So if you could hit record.
Thank you.
Okay.
Got it.
Wait, hold on, my, this is my, I'm a, I'm a Microsoft Teams woman. Hold on, look, okay, here's the record.
That's interesting. So, okay, when you got booted, it stopped recording. Okay. Are we good, Mona?
Record on this computer or records the cloud?
The cloud.
Records the cloud, okay. I didn't realize I was still the host.
You are, you are in charge of this meeting.
I thought I was a different link from the FNA one.
All right. All right. All right. Thank you. All right, Public Health and Safety, Mr. McGreevy.
I move that Borough Council approve advertisement of ordinance 1029 per the attachment. This is the amendment to the mask ordinance.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mona, is there any further discussion? We had plenty of discussion at the prior meeting. Anyone? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? See none. Thank you. There you go. Okay, moving to H. Price Crossing, that goes back to you, Council Record.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final release of escrow number nine, Price Crossing Development.
Second? Bob, any discussion? Yes, Rob?
Just, I, I just wanted to ask for a little clarity. Does this mean that the project is completed to our satisfaction? Is that why the escrow is being released?
Yes, I mean, as far as the public improvements that were installed as part of the project, they've been better still in escrow or being held for escrow. They get stormwater and some landscaping at this point.
Does, does this include bollards? I had a question from a resident about bollards that were supposed to be installed, or is that a different project?
I'd have to look. I do know that there was an itemized list of the improvements connected to Eric Johnson's letter. But, I mean, I, I would trust that Eric would have picked up if there was something, supposed to be something there that was not there.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess to say that if, if it wasn't done, it doesn't mean that they don't have to do it. It just doesn't, it means we wouldn't have the financial security for it, to put it in ourselves.
All in favor?
And, and, and I just.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say for the record, and maybe John and Sean can check me on this, is this the last development in the pipeline that actually followed the old zoning ordinance to the pre-2016 code? So if so, I think it's a, it's a milestone. And I think it's just something we can all just be pleased about, that it, that, that we're, we're over any development under the pre-form based code.
You won't be seeing any more like it, is what you're saying.
Well, nothing more like it, and we'll, yeah.
Just to follow up on Rob's question, there are bollards listed in Eric's letter and it's listed as completed. The bollards have been put in.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? None, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, back to infrastructure, or to the infrastructure for the first time. Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
I move that Borough Council authorize the Borough Manager to advertise ordinance 1030 per the attachment.
Is there a second? Rob's got it. Discussion? Maybe a brief summary for the public.
So we have EV charging stations. They have arrived in a bunch of different packages to the Borough Office, and they are awaiting installation. But in order to, so we're going to be charging a fee to use electricity on the charging station. And in order to do that, we need an ordinance enabling us to charge a fee and take in the money. And then this ordinance also allows us to put up signs saying EV charging and, let's see, I believe that is what's in there right now. Is that right, John?
There's also a catch-all at the very end, which is just something that I think is worth having that allows other commercial uses to have these. I mean, right now, there isn't anything in our code that would technically allow someone to have an electric vehicle charging station for public use. And this allows that. Of course, we're not enforcing on someone else's property. But this is, this is sort of a, this is, this is new. I, I don't know if anyone else in Pennsylvania has, has this actually set up yet that I've seen. So this is a good foundational ordinance to, to get this program off the ground.
Great. Well, congratulations to you, John, for writing the first one.
But much like the straws and plastic bags, I've looked around to a lot of progressive cities that have, have done this in, in other states and jurisdictions.
Massaged it to the, to the laws of the Commonwealth. Yeah.
Well, and the expertise of Mr. McGreevy and Mr. Bush when it comes to electric vehicles, too.
And any regulations respecting the exclusive use of the parking lot and penalties for whether, when you can use it for EV charging and when not are something that we've not included in this ordinance. For now, we're going to take those up as part of the overall look at our, at our parking regulations and structure in the next, in the coming months.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Just a quick, I'm sorry, clarifying question. John, you had said, I'm sorry, so this includes private lots, lots for.
Commercial, commercial, private, yeah.
Commercial. So what does that mean? That a business could put in an EV charger and then charge the public if they were to come on their property for the battery use, for the charger use?
I, I think it'd be more if, yes, but I think it'd be more of the customers that would, would be using that lot, or if, if there is a business that ran its own commercial parking lot to have, to have those installed on, on that property.
So Rite Aid could say, we're going to put an EV charger and our customers can pay to charge their battery. Okay.
Correct. And, and again, we're, we're not enforcing that if someone was to, you know, violate their laws, but it's good to actually have the permission in case they were ever challenged to say, what right do you have to put in an electric vehicle charging station on your, on your, on your lot?
Got it.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. It will be advertised. We go to our added action item 7J. Can I get a motion maybe from Mr. Bush with a suggested number? You could throw it on the table.
I'm going to move that we offer, or we ask our trustees to present us with an option that would result in a 6.5% expected rate of return for us to consider.
Hey, is there a second? Cindy seconded. Any discussion?
Um.
Yes.
Not to rehash your summers, but I mean, I think Mona and I both expressed of, wow, we're both really fiscally risk averse in our own personal lives. And it felt like Chris and our police pension fund agreed with that as well. And Fred did a deeper dive and his national analysis of states and municipalities was incredibly convincing. And I'd said, you got me in the last paragraph, Fred, when he said, we're actually more fiscally conservative than Kentucky. You know, we are, we are at the lowest, or I guess, the lowest percentage. And it was incredibly helpful. He did a tremendous amount of work. And it really was that, that second deep dive you took, Fred, that, that really made me convinced, like, okay, in, in the spectrum, we are, we are really off balance. And perhaps there is room to make an adjustment. So thank you for that. And I, I think this is an appropriate move to ask for a specific number and see what that analysis is and let us consider that.
Great. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. And the motion passes, none opposed. I did, I think I counted seven. All right, it's unanimous. And thank you. And Fred, thank you for your deep dive into all that work. It's going to make a difference. Okay, let's move on to our next agenda item. Mr. Manager, do you have a report? You're muted.
I talked about items in the finance and admin meeting as about how things were tracking. Generally speaking, we are still on track on the income side. I'm still, about half of our revenue yet to book is in the form of tax, property tax payments that we haven't booked yet. It's typical to be about 4% short at this time of year. As you recall, the Borough passed a resolution that extinguished the 10% late payment penalty for tax payments made after the face, face value date expired. However, if those payments aren't made by the end of the year, the, the system outloads or offloads the taxes owed to the county offices and the 10% lien, the 10% penalty is applied at that point when a lien is levied against the property. So we do expect this revenue to come in. It's the only risk on our revenue side that we're seeing. And on our expenditure sides, bottom line, we were, we were still tracking to be about $5,000 more or less in the black ink by the end of the year, whereas we had budgeted to be about 38, as Mr. McGreevy said, about 38,000 in the black ink at the beginning of the year. So that's how our reserve was used up, so to speak, this, this year. It was, it was to meet the shortfall that we had in revenues for this year. But that's where we stand right now. And that's what I went over in FNA. I have nothing else besides that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Solicitor?
Well, this past month, I've been working on the ordinances that have been coming before you for advertisement. So we'll get those scheduled for hearings, the upcoming public meetings for the Business Council meetings. One of the matters I did want to bring to council's attention and I'd ask for council action tonight, as we've previously discussed in executive sessions regarding litigation, this is regarding the properties located 248 and 250 Iona Avenue. These are single-family residential houses, one of them being a twin house, that are not being used for such purposes. As a result, the Borough Code Enforcement Officer issued a notice of violation back in March, asking them to stop. That was not appealed to the zoning hearing board. The illegal uses continued. So I was directed to file a complaint, which is being filed, or in the process of being filed against those two landowners who are entities. I would like this council to provide a formal authorization on the record in case that comes up later on as being challenged for authorization. So I'd ask for a motion to authorize a solicitor to pursue those complaints against 248, 250 Iona Avenue landowners. I'm happy to answer some specific questions. I'd rather get into more details in the executive session, which I would ask for tonight on an additional legal matter as well.
Okay. We will do this under number nine, new business. So we'll put it on and we'll get to it in about five, five minutes or less. Anything else? That's it. The monthly ports have been filed. Any comments for the good of council?
I'm sorry, do we have a police report for this month? I didn't see it. Was the chief want to?
Oh.
The chief filed, I'm sorry, we got a little behind because of a matter of the chief, it got injured and we got a little behind. So we have September's report filed for tonight. We, I can have that submitted. And then October should be shortly forthcoming.
Any comments for the good of council? Mona?
I, I don't know if this is in this section or in old business. I was wondering about the Heritage Action Plan, like when we're going to watch the last Planning Commission meeting. And I think I have.
I can keep, yeah, I can give you an update. Yeah, I'll bring that up under old business.
Okay.
Well, I have a comment for the good of council, which is, Chief, it's nice to hear you're fully mended and, and back with us after a, you know, pretty significant injury. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I would really like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for all their showing of support. I received so many numerous texts and emails and phone calls, not only from elected officials, but from people throughout the Borough who heard. And I'm, I'm 100% okay. I'm back to full duty and I'm glad to be here.
Great. All right, now new business. Would someone like to make a motion regarding 248, 250?
I move to authorize the Borough Solicitor to take enforcement actions against the property owners of 248 and 250 Iona Avenue.
Is there a second? Seconded by Bob. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope, it's unanimous. All right, you are so authorized, Mr. Solicitor. All right, any other new business? Any old business before I get to Mona's question? Okay, I did speak with Mr. Bressy. There was extensive discussion at the last Planning Commission meeting about, oh, Mr. Bressy's here. I let him speak for himself. Go ahead, Todd, if you want to unmute yourself.
Also, hang on a second, there's noise in the background.
All right, doesn't sound too bad from our end.
Okay. Let's start the video. Yes. The Heritage Action Plan was a process and a project that was completed late last year. It was created by the Larry Mary Conservancy and the Pennsylvania Museums and Heritage Commission. And it provided a number of recommendations to the Borough about how it could pursue stronger policies for the.
policies for the preservation of its built environment, there were six major recommendations. The Planning Commission reviewed this plan extensively in the fall of last year, over the course of several meetings, and issued a report to Council in January on this topic. At the time, we conferred with Council President Muterick about this, and determined that our priorities for this year would be the the creation of the zoning amendment that we just discussed earlier this evening, and the updating of the Borough Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance. And once those were off the decks, we could then consider looking at the recommendations of the Heritage Action Plan, particularly those related to exploring the possibility of a historic district in Norbert. Some other recommendations of the plan were to hire a Main Street manager for downtown to focus on retail recruitment, and that has, I've discussed that, I think, with Finance and Administration a few months ago. So that's where it was, I mean, that's what we agreed was to, you know, do those first two projects and then come back to the Heritage Action Plan. It came up at the Planning Commission meeting this month, because there have been a lot of residential redevelopment this year, and Planning Commissioners were wondering what tools we might bring to bear, and we might recommend the Council, you know, to manage this, what we're seeing better, and thought that the recommendations of the Heritage Action Plan might be more urgent now than they seemed last year. And so we requested in our letter to you earlier this month to Council that you reconsider the urgency of that matter, of the Heritage Action Plan, and particularly the Planning Commission's looking into what a historic preservation or historic district ordinance might look like for Norbert, so that's where we are.
Mona, does that bring any specific questions to bear now that you have sort of a general update? Because I think you had some specific concerns.
No, I was just wondering where we were in the process of looking at it in Council, that's all.
Let me just ask a quick follow up, Todd, and then to Bob, where do we stand now with the, you know, we've moved the zoning amendments off the table? Right, so.
Half done, we're about halfway.
Saldo's about half finished, okay.
Maggie.
And you think that would be sort of the end of March, or are we talking June?
June.
June, okay.
And then March, yeah.
But maybe if there's room for two things, there might be room for two things, not three, on the table at any given time.
Planning Commission, we would be happy to move this task forward if directed by Council, and so the point of our letter was to kind of reflag that as an urgent matter, and requesting that, you know, you consider that this might be more of a priority than it seemed to be last year.
Yeah.
I just, I just think so that we don't leave any doubt in the minds of the public or any members of Planning Commission, that we make a motion now to ask the Planning Commission to prioritize that at their earliest ability to attend to this and make a recommendation to us, and so that there's no question about that, it's just, it will be done in due, you know, in due course.
The problem is, I'm not sure what we're asking them to make a recommendation on.
Well, we're asking them to think through their recommendation from the two A organizations that worked with the task force, and to look with our Solicitor if necessary, and what can be done in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in a borough like ours to make, to reach those goals of protecting historic buildings in reducing the amount of, say, less than desirable opportunistic tear downs, and the maintenance of the fabric of the town that we, you know, that we consider historically significant. So, I mean, I think they're going to look at, how do you put into law, how do you codify the recommendations of the task force? And I think that we just simply, as a Council, say, yes, we would like to see those recommendations, and so we'd like to make those a priority as soon as you're able to deal with those.
Michelle?
Yeah, I still, having read the draft before the first, before the draft, the early draft that you provided to us, Bob, when you were on the Heritage Committee, and the draft in January, I've read it several times. I don't, I just want to make sure I understand what it is we're authorizing, okay? There are, I want to authorize the Planning Commission to move forward on actions that will protect the Borough, I think we're all very, very concerned about opportunistic demolitions and tear downs. There's no question, everybody's unified on that. When I read that, when I read the Heritage Action Plan, I see that there were sort of two courses of action that could be considered, right? There was one under the Historic District Act and one under the Municipal Planning Code. And I only see a very comprehensive sort of assessment of the former, of the Historic District Act. I don't see any consideration of what traction the Borough of Norbert could get into the Municipal Planning Code. And I just, I want to make sure that, I want to know, are we authorizing the Planning Commission to simply pursue the Historic District Act path, like just that track and disregard the other one? Are we authorizing the Planning Commission to take a look at both? At this time, have we ruled one out?
So what I might suggest, hearing both of you, is maybe what we authorize first is for the Planning Commission to look at both options and flesh them out at a high level.
I mean, I feel like the Planning Commission feels like they've already done that, and I don't want to backtrack, right? I don't want to backtrack, I just want to understand why we're choosing one path, and I'd be much more comfortable if I had the ability to understand that better, because the high-level analysis in the Heritage Action Plan, I think, may assume an understanding that I don't have.
Todd, is that something you can add some more information on now, or?
I can add a little more now. It's correct to say there are two paths, one is through the Municipal Planning Code, and one is through the State Preservation Act, and it's also correct to say we evaluated both paths. And in our own reading of things, and on the advice of the Conservancy and the State Preservation Office, it feels like a district approach, the Preservation Act gives us a better tool to manage what we want. In general, the state planning, approaching this through the Planning Code allows us to manage pinpoint resources like that church, or that school, or that historic house, you know, single buildings of certain significance, whereas the District Act allows you to manage a broader contextual area, and it's actually very flexible in terms of how you can approach it. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't prescribe the solutions you choose, it gives you the ability to craft solutions that are appropriate for you. So the Commission felt that the State Preservation Act was a better tool for Norbert to start with. I think, you know, to kind of help, what we could do is, when we come back to you, we could re-present the evaluation, the two options, and why we think one option is better than the other, and what that option would look like were it to apply to Norbert. I'm mindful, seeing Sean in my screen here, is that one of the real issues we have to look at is how this, how it would work administratively, how any extra level of regulation would work in concert with our existing practices of accepting building applications, reviewing them, and so forth. Sean has made it very clear to me that that has to be done in a thoughtful way. So it's not just about what gets us to the right outcome, but it's also, how does the Borough manage something realistically?
My motion sort of stands, and I think I agree with Todd's, you know, that they could work through those tracks and come out with a recommendation for us, regardless of which track it is, without backtracking.
So I'll take it, I'll take it, could you just sort of restate it, and we'll actually make it a motion, and then see, we've got a second, and we'll try to move this.
So I move that we authorize the Planning Commission to provide us with the most expedient path to achieving our goals around historic preservation, whether they are, regardless of how they are tracked or expressed, but in the most practical and effective way. Someone can, someone can put that into words better than I just did, but, you know.
Michelle, would you like to stake the motion?
No, 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 it's great, the problem is, is that we haven't actually agreed on a set of goals.
Well, I believe that's why we have a Planning Commission, actually, and I think that's why we actually landed these recommendations from the Museum of Historical Conservancy, the Museum of Historic Preservation, and the Conservancy in their lap, so that they, because they have actually the group of thinkers who are capable of sort of, you know, threshing through these things, and some of us can join them if we want to, the whole entire public's welcome to join them, and then they come to us with whatever are recommendations that will meet these goals.
Again, what I'm saying is, it's not the recommendations, it's just, I'm not sure that we've settled on our goals. I want to make sure that, but, you know, maybe this is something we could talk about at a later time. I just want to make sure that we understand what our goals are, I think we all share the goal of taking action to prevent sort of exploitative, like predatory, tear downs of old properties, like, everybody shares that goal. But there are other potential goals that are articulated throughout the Heritage Action Plan, some of which are expressed, some of which are stated as, well, these are potentially things that you could do, and I don't know which goals we're authorizing pursuit of, other than the first one, which I think we're all unified on, and I don't know.
I'd like to authorize them to pursue a goal, to articulate that goal in the way that they best see fit as our Planning Commission.
And to come back to us with that recommendation.
Yes, given that we're not going to, we're not going to be able to.
All right, so that's a stated motion, which is for the Planning Commission to take on, you know, historic preservation in the way that they best see fit, and come back to us with a high level of their recommendation, recommended direction, and so is there a second for that? Rob? Rob's got it, all right, any further discussion on that specific motion? All right, all in favor? Aye. And opposed? None, all right, passes, and you have marching orders, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, who should we coordinate with, or should we coordinate with you, or?
Yeah, you and I can continue to work directly. Thank you. All right, well, our next, I think I already asked for other old business, so our next order of business is a motion to adjourn, and then we will go into executive session after a brief break. Anyone want to move? Cindy, move to adjourn, Mona's second, all in favor? Aye. Have a good evening, public, it'll take three minutes, and then we'll have an executive session on another topic.
All right, is this the decision to tomorrow's executive session?
It surely is.